I'm going to go ahead and start the meeting, but is anybody, we have another candidate that hasn't arrived?
Yes.
I know. So, we are on air, the special open meeting of the Board of Directors of the Golden Rain Foundation of Laguna Woods at California Nonprofit Mutual Benefit Corporation this Monday, December 6, 2021, 1:30 PM in Laguna Woods, California, call this meeting to order. So, the purpose of this meeting today is to interview and appoint a VMS board rep for GRF. This person that has won the election today will be seated December 15, 2021, at the VMS annual meeting. So, I, is there any objections to the agenda? So, if there are no objections to the agenda, the agenda is approved by unanimous consent. So, our candidates today, one is Leiling Isaacs, and the other one is Annette, but she is not here today, and that I don't see her at this point in time, and so I'm thinking that if she's not here, then she will not end up being a candidate unless she pops in.
She is a candidate, she just doesn't get to answer.
Pardon?
She is a candidate, she does.
Yes, but don't they have to show up?
No.
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 Just means she's not here for the questioning.
But we're voting today.
Yes.
And she'll be on the ballot, so.
Okay. So, what I'd like to do is turn the meeting over to Juanita, who is our host today and will be conducting the questions.
Thank you, Bunny. Let me just set the guide rules here. I did talk to Leiling, but just for everybody in the audience, we will open with each candidate, the candidate, giving a three-minute introductory statement. Then, I have approximately, I have 11 questions to ask, and they are open-ended questions, and we give the candidate three minutes to answer that question, and up to three minutes. And then, after the questions, we will have concluding remarks, again, from the candidate for three minutes, and then we will go to the voting, and we have a secret ballot from our corporate secretaries over there, and we'll get the ballot results, and that will do it for today. Yes?
Does it require a majority vote or plurality?
Majority. All right, we will start off. Leiling, would you give us your candidate's statement, please?
I'm Leiling Isaacs.
Turn your microphone off.
I'm Leiling Isaacs.
Wait, 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 you need to press the button.
Make sure the light's green.
Thank you. I'm Leiling Isaacs. I've owned here for over 14 years, first in United, and then in Third. I have a PhD in microbiology, a master's in population biology, and a bachelor's in zoology. I'm a retired professor, Professor Emerita, I was a, of Goucher College. I was a program director between Goucher College and Lee Johns Hopkins University, Whiting School of Engineering, in the field of biomedical engineering and chemical engineering. I'm running for the VMS Board because I believe I have the skill sets to help improve the current situation. There seems to be a communication issue. Many think that PCM was better than VMS, not realizing that PCM no longer exists. Perception is a large part of reality. As a member of the VMS Board, I will be privy to information that a regular resident may not have. As long as it does not violate confidentiality issues, I hope to write periodic articles in The Globe, The Village Breeze, and contribute to the E-Blast, reporting the progress that VMS has made, and also discuss issues on how residents may help. Hopefully, this would help promote the perception of transparency among residents. Effective communications can promote greater satisfaction and may help lessen costly lawsuits where win or lose, only attorneys gain financially. Less money spent on lawsuits means more money for maintenance. I have much to learn. However, similar skills are involved in monitoring most operations, whether it be in academia, a pharmaceutical company where I spent my sabbatical leave, or VMS. Monitoring operations is an important part of ensuring that VMS is fulfilling its contract with GRF. I am open-minded, patient, courteous, methodical, detail-oriented, without losing sight of the big picture, service-oriented, able to compromise, able to work with people of diverse ethnicities and educational background, and I can accept rejection. These traits, I hope, would help identify issues and perceive any problematic patterns that may require a change.
Time has expired.
May I finish?
You could finish that sentence, but that's it.
Our clarification of policy.
All right, thank you. All right, since she is not here, we will not have her opening statement. If, Madam President, if you want, we can read her opening statement from the candidate package. You could do it, or I could do it, just in the instance of fairness.
I basically feel that if she's not here to represent herself, then.
Yes, many times they call and say they can't be here for whatever reason.
Someone should read the opening statement.
All right, let me get it.
So, let's talk about how we're going to proceed here.
President Carpenter, please.
Okay, so, so you're asking to read a candidate's statement, but how are we going to go forward with the rest of the questions?
We can't, but we can just put her candidate's statement into the record.
Thank you.
Okay, the candidate's statement is for Annette Sable Soul.
Excuse me, Jeff just mentioned that she's late, but she will be here.
Oh, okay, all right, well, we will wait on her candidate's statement and continue with the questions.
Okay.
All right.
May I suggest a recess, because I think it's important for each candidate to hear the other's responses.
But it's difficult to do a recess when we're on the air.
I understand. Is that more important than hearing out all the candidates entirely?
That's why I wanted to get her statement into it. It's up to you, Madam Chair. If you want to recess, we can take a five-minute recess while we wait for her to show up. They didn't say how long she'd be.
What do you think, you're a charlatan.
Okay, I'm going to recess until she gets here, and I need a second, and then we'll take a vote on.
But I don't know how long she's going to take.
Up to 10 minutes. Up to 10 minutes then.
I can't hear what you're saying.
Up to 10 minutes.
Yes.
I'm starting with on Wednesday, she's on her way.
We need to take a vote on Annette, we need to take a vote, Bunny.
Okay, thank you.
I second it.
All right, Eileen just told me that she is on her way. She thought it was Wednesday.
So, she's on her way, so if we take a 10-minute recess, we can come back and start over.
She should be back here then, yeah. She doesn't need to hear Leiling's statement, she just here needs to give her statement and do the questions.
Yes, okay, so we're going to take a 10-minute break, and it's 1:30, 1:40, 1:39, it's 1:40, so we'll come back in 10 minutes, and adjourn. And is there any discussion? Is there any objections? So, if there's no objections, then we'll pass. Thank you. 10 minutes. Any objections? Thank you.
Interesting.
He's online, he's online.
Ah.
We can see his face.
Well, on a recess, we've been struggling. Don't you think that's a bit long?
Went over from Bunny, we're social distancing.
Yep.
No, we can't.
Trying to settle in a little bit. We're ready to start on the air, so I'm just waiting for the seven.
My ringer.
Everybody take their phone.
It's just a short program, right?
Juanita is the host, we're asking the question, so you don't need any.
Okay.
And Rodney has this.
I have a copy of your statement if you want it, Annette.
Pardon?
I have a copy of your statement if you'd like.
I would love that.
Okay.
Right, she's, we're at the point where Leiling has given her opening statement, and so now it's more of an open.
There you go. I was going to read your statement, but then you wouldn't get the questions.
So, I'll introduce Annette Soul, and.
President Carpenter, please make sure your microphone's on.
Thank you. All right, for those who do not know Annette, this is Annette Soul, and she is the other candidate applying for VMS GRF rep. Thank you. So, Juanita?
All right, Leiling has already given her opening statement, so, Annette, can we get your opening statement? And just to let you know what we're doing, each of you will give an opening statement, then I will ask questions, 10, 11 questions, depending on time. Each of you will have a chance to answer. They're open-ended questions, you have three minutes, try to put as much as you can in. I don't like one-word answers, and then we will have your closing statement of three minutes before we vote. You know how to use the microphone.
Yes, I think it's pretty light. Good afternoon, my name is Annette Sable Soul, and I have been a resident of Laguna Woods Village since 2005, living in the Third Mutual. My education is, I have a master's in public administration, an undergraduate in basically bank and business administration. I have worked for over 21 and a half years as a regional administrative officer for the United States Department of Justice, and this was in the Central District of California, which is Los Angeles and this greater area, it's one of the busiest in the country, for five offices and 71 people. My prior activities volunteering was I was the school site council president at Benita Canyon Elementary School in Irvine. I was the co-chair of the video committee for senior presence for the National Cheerleading League for my daughter, it was a six-year commitment. I was the recording secretary for the Irvine Education Foundation in Irvine, and vice president of the Water Polo Club at University High School in Irvine, along with being in junior league, and a lot of, I worked in a lot of political events. In Laguna Woods Village, the activities I held was at GRF, I was the first vice president of GRF, I was the chair of the community activities committee, chair of the media committee, chair of the security committee, I served on finance and basically landscape. For Third, I was a director there, and on the Third Board, I served on finance, maintenance, and construction, traffic. I was the chair of the Garden Villa Golf Cart Parking Task Force. I belong to the Robert Schule Study Club, a member of the video club, and I take classes at Emeritus in stretching, yoga, and sewing. I'm also a beginning golfer. I thought that as a prior director of both Third and GRF, I always attended numerous meetings and talked to residents to get a better understanding of their needs and their priorities. Two examples I'd like to cite, the first is security, that committee and the use of drones in the village. The policy was revised first in Third, then GRF and United. Now only VMS security or their signees may fly drones in the village. It took a lot of coordination to pass this resolution. Lastly, I worked on extending the term of the trust.
Time has expired. Thank you very much.
Finish your sentence.
Yeah, you can finish your sentence.
Oh, okay. I worked on extending the term of the trust expiration date. Thank you.
All right, I have a number of questions here, and I'm going to go back and forth between the two of you with the same question. Leiling, let's start with you. What do you know about the VMS Board?
Ah, the VMS Board, as far as I know, consists, is a nine-member board, and three, with three representatives each, for United, for Third, and for GRF. Currently, the president is Rosemarie Di Lorenzo from Third, and the first vice president is Wei Ming Tao. The VMS Board, as far as I know, monitor operations to make sure that the VMS is fulfilling its contract with GRF.
Okay, thank you. Same question for you, Annette. What do you know about the VMS Board?
Well, I'd like to repeat what she just said, because that hasn't changed, and that's the consistency of the board makeup, and basically, the administration, it's the oversight of the, of management, to make sure that they are fulfilling what the boards are requiring them to do.
Okay, that's it?
Uh huh.
All right. Next question, and you'll start, Annette. What contributions do you hope to make to the VMS Board?
Well, I think they do a good job, but I would work towards improving always administration because that's continuous, that's ongoing, and inter-board cooperation, and, you know, there again, and the diversity, but the inter-board cooperation, I think it has to do with the minutes of all the meetings and coordinating them to make sure that they're all, everything that VMS is tasked to do, those minutes are reviewed, like, monthly after the board meetings, and they make sure that they are incorporated into what VMS's administration is to do for here in the village, and we're following through with all the laws and the rules that we passed.
Leiling, what contributions do you hope to make to the Board?
Well, I hope to improve perceptions and understanding of what the VMS Board does. Most of the residents in my gate believe that the VMS Board is the boss of all the boards, not realizing that we are actually answerable to the three other boards. I hope to improve communicate, perception through communications, because there seems to be a communication issue. We are currently understaffed, and that's part of the problem. In my gate, when I explain that we are understaffed, they actually are very accepting, because they realize that our salaries are not really very competitive in this tight labor market. I have grant proposals writing skills. If I understand how VMS operate, I might be able to contribute to write grant proposals where we can get additional funds, because according to Tyler Birding, there are four stages in the life of HOAs. When you're fresh, it's wonderful, and as we age and deteriorate, our costs. When you're fresh, it's wonderful. And as we age and deteriorate, our costs will increase. But we have many folks that are on fixed incomes. So, our physical deterioration may be help if we can get, obtain state grants. I have grant proposal writing skills. I have been funded. So, I would like to help if possible, although I'm from a different field. But I was editor of a volunteer scientific instrument to inform people. So, I hope to use the same communication skills. And I also hope to make our public understand better how our governing bodies operate and what our limitations are and how they can help. I find that when people understand, perception improves and we instill goodwill. And that has happened in my gate. When I explained that we are short-staffed, they are very, very patient. And they're willing to work, I'm the conduit for my gate, so that we do not bother staff with repeated request. And that's all. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, you get to start the next question. How do you see your responsibility to GRF and to the VMS Board?
I would be a bridge, in a way, to, between GRF and the VMS Board. My understanding of the VMS Board is we monitor, the VMS would, Board would primarily monitor operations and to make sure that the VMS is fulfilling its contract with GRF. That's how I perceive it. I, I was a professor and a teacher for over thirty years. I was told I have excellent communication skills. So, I hope that through improvement of communications, we improve perception. Perception is a greater part of reality. I know that folks here are actually quite patient if they understand what's involved in the process. It's when folks operate in the dark that rumors abound, which can be destructive and a waste of time. So, I hope that through my involvement with VMS and being answerable to the GRF, I can also help the public understand better the roles that each body play and what we're responsible for and how they can help.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, Annette, the same question to you. How do you see your responsibilities to GRF and to the VMS Board?
Okay. If given the opportunity to represent GRF on the VMS Board, I guess I'll strive for continuous improvement.
Please make sure your microphone's on.
Oh.
I apologize. If given the opportunity to represent GRF on the VMS Board, I will strive for continuous improvement, but I need to, basically, my focus, I think, would be to VMS and then reporting back to GRF and then seeing, you know, and GRF sharing what their thoughts are, the VMS.
Okay. Annette, you get the next question. Describe any interactions that you have had with VMS staff.
I'd have to say they've all been wonderful. Excuse me. As I said, I was the chair of media and communication and my dealings with Eileen Pollan have been wonderful. I find her to be extraordinary in terms of communication and working even with the transition as she went ahead and started to get broadband underneath her duties. I've worked with Chuck Holland and I have found him to be excellent. I've worked with, prior to Rojas taking over security, it was Chief Moy. And my dealings with him were very good, so I'd have to say with everyone that I've encountered, I've really liked all the hires and I've really had excellent dealings with all of them. I'm not saying that we haven't had discussion and we haven't had back and forth. I really like that. I always say that, you know, we're not gonna think the same. If I wanted somebody that thought just like me, I'd buy a mirror. I really appreciate the, what everybody brings to the table and, as I said, the, just the cooperation of the different directors on VMS. So, all my dealings have been excellent.
Okay, what, how about as a private residence, have you had any interaction with staff?
Yes, yes. When I was on GRF, I had the pleasure of having to move out of the master bedroom and bath due to mo, due to what's called mold. And that meant the master, as a woman, really, the master bathroom and closet were mine. And to, basically, they had to go in and take out all the drywall and it was a mess from the outside in. For about four and a half months, I dealt with that and all my dealings were excellent. They, I wouldn't say that it wasn't trying for me. It was trying. It was challenging, but my dealings were fine. I've also dealt with landscape to get the house re-landscaped because we've lived there since 2005. And they, we had two big trees and they created a lot of mold. And as they did that, that mold caused my husband to have headaches. It was like black mold. So, they came in and they took those trees out and I had done a lot of photographing of neighborhoods and then they put in a tiered and they put in the, I guess it would be brick. And they worked on that for months and they did a fantastic job. So, all my dealings, I guess when they did the paint job, they found a lot of dry rot on the side. They took that apart and destroyed all my calla lilies because I'm a gardener. But, you know, they needed to do that because it was a two-story. I'm living a sixplex. And they were kind and I couldn't say enough, you know, and just, it's challenging when you have to do those things because, you know, they did have to destroy something I spent years doing, but, you know, they needed to do it. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Lailin, what kind of interactions of any, of any, or if any, have you had with VMS staff?
Some of the VMS staff were here when PCM was here. And my interaction with them was as part of the ad hoc water conservation committee where I was the advisor for Third. Currently, with the VMS staff, my interactions are primarily, was primarily, were primarily with Eileen Pollan, which was very positive. Eileen Pollan agreed to mount a television show where residents were allowed to present their view regarding Third through interactions with me, although I was not in that show. Eileen Pollan also contacted me for an issue that I was not aware of and I am not at liberty to discuss that. But I misunderstood it and thought she wanted me to promote the vaccination program because I had written the CEO about it and I was, Eileen was referred to me because I have a PhD in microbiology and I also taught immunology. So, I explained, I contacted the residents and explained the process to them and asked them to be patient as this required tremendous effort on Eileen's part. So, I have a very positive view of Eileen Pollan and her department. The other interaction I have is with landscaping Kurt Wyman, whom I think is wonderful. I am the intermediary between Kurt and my gate, which is Gate 11. We decided as a gate, because of my communication skills, that we were going to channel all our requests through me so as not to impinge on his time because it's a gigantic operations. And we have seen progress in my gate. There's a higher satisfaction level. They understand the short staffing, so that has worked well. That's why I think communicating progress and what VMS has done in the contract to GRF is very important. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, again, you get the next one. As a member of the VMS Board, how would you approach a major problem in the VMS work environment?
I would need to research it first, understand it very thoroughly, gather facts and put together a picture. And I would need to consult my colleagues because several minds are better than one. And I would also need to consult folks in the VMS staff who know about the situation. And then I guess we have to choose, make a decision that does the least damage to anyone. I realize that situations might be, might not be ideal, but that's the best I can come up with.
Okay, thank you. Annette, as a pure member of the VMS Board, how would you approach a major problem in the VMS work environment?
Well, first, I think you can never have too many advisors. So, that would be critical in terms of, and it depends on what it was. It would depend on if it was, how it needed to be handled as far as who you could talk to, who you could reach out to and how discreet you needed to be depending upon the issue. And then once you've kind of figured out what you could do to reach out and to share with those that you were allowed to share that information with as, in terms of advisors and discussion in terms of how to handle that problem. Every problem's really unique. You really, it's kind of like you don't know what to do until it really comes upon you and then once it does, every problem brings its own set of, you know, rules on how to deal with it in terms of if it's, if it's privileged and also who that employee is. Is it a director? You know, you just really need to deal with it. Each case is very individual. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Sort of along with that, what would be, what would govern your actions on the VMS Board? Are there any rules, laws, people, whatever?
To clarify, Director Gullman, is that a new question with a new time amount?
It is.
Okay, thank you.
Do you mean like, do I follow like Robert's Rules of Order? Is that what you're asking me?
That could be one of them.
Okay, so it would be, I would say you would try to, you would, you would do it that way in terms of that would govern. I mean, we would follow that. We would follow also what the, the chair, how the chair chooses to conduct the meetings. We would also look at the agendas to see, you know, what happens when and when you, where you have to be and what you have to do and what your obligations are in terms of governance. And that would be, pretty much if you're a director, then you've, you've got the chair, the co-chair and I think the first person that's behind that, so you would follow their lead.
Okay, so as far as you know, there aren't any government regulations?
Oh, there's the, just like what we have, the trust, there's the articles. I mean, there's, there's the paperwork that you follow. Is that what you're asking me? Like the Articles of Corporation? That and the, and Robert's Rules of Order. You would follow what you're supposed to follow, general.
Okay, I'm not here to argue with you. Lailin, how about you on the same question? What do you see as governance over the VMS Board?
I, I would need to do my due diligence, my, to understand how the board operates. I would need to be loyal. So, there are certain things that I cannot disclose. I would need to be confidential. And we operate as a body, not as, as an individual. I would need to do, do my due diligence to find out the circumstances of a situation to educate myself thoroughly so I make choices that do the least harm and do the most good for all. And whatever happens in closed meetings, stay in closed meetings. And whatever is allowed to be in open communications, then those are the things that I can discuss. But we, as a member of the Board, we would work as a whole body and I cannot go off as an individual to do things on my own and decide things on my own.
Okay, thank you. All right, the next question is very, I'm afraid some of these are, are very similar and kind of overlap, but still there, there are different points. What do you think are the most important elements to consider when you're making a decision for the VMS Board? The most important elements?
Well, the, my greatest responsibility would be to the corporation, which is probably structured for the greater good. And I would need to do, due diligence to research and be as knowledgeable as possible. We have, we have many highly qualified individuals in the village, highly, highly educated. It would be great if we could inveigle them to be involved in advising us and to tap into that broad work experience and education to help us make the best choices. Our choices may not be perfect, but the choices that we make must be those that preserve the corporations. Because in the long run, that is what leads to the longevity of our different entities in the village.
Thank you. All right, Annette, the same question. What do you think are the most important elements to consider when making a decision for the VMS Board?
It would be the role, the role that VMS has to, basically for oversight for the employees and that general body.
Okay. Your next question, what would you do if you cannot agree with the decision of the Board?
I believe that question comes to me first?
Yes.
Okay. I think the most important thing is there's a vote. And usually in a vote, however the vote goes, is how it goes. So, if I, I would either be for something or I'd be against something and once they voted, it would be done.
All right, Lailin, same question to you. What would you do if you cannot agree with the decision? with the decision the board makes?
I, I would have to accept it. And because we, it works best if we work as a body, as a whole. And I'm no cowboy. So I do agree with what she just said.
All right. Next question goes to you. If somebody asked you to give an impromptu presentation on any topic, what subject would you pick? And tell us why.
I would like to discuss how we can age successfully and gracefully. And that is through our fellowship with our fellow human beings. And I, I believe in God, although I'm a scientist. And I believe that if I can convey the sense of gratitude that we can live in this wonderful village, which it's not perfect, but it's not perfect anywhere in the world. But where can you have so many activities? I have never had so many friends in this village. So that, that's essentially it. It's a wonderful place to live.
All right, thank you. Same question to you, Annette. If somebody asked you to give an impromptu presentation on any topic, what subject would you pick? And would you explain why?
Okay, yes, I would talk about exercise, eating right, and socialization. That would be like all into one because I believe that you need yoga and stretching and you need fresh food and you need buddies to do all that with in order to maintain and to age well, here or anywhere that you live. So I would definitely talk about and tout up our Emeritus programs, which we have, and they, on Zoom. They have saved me through this pandemic, doing their yoga and their stretch classes. And they have, you know, so many things to offer in this village along with the clubs or golfing or lawn bowling, tennis. There's just lots of different ways all of us can exercise, walking around this community, the Aliso Creek. There's just so much to do. But I would also, also stress the, the joy of making your own food at home, like in the kitchen if possible, and for it to be fresh because nutrition, good nutrition is very important to your mind also. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. All right. You get first crack at this one, Annette. Should social media be used for board business? Why or why not?
Okay, when you say social media, I'm assuming, are you talking about Zoom? Or are you talking about like TikTok and?
All of it.
Okay, no, absolutely, absolutely not. I don't think TikTok or, you know, Instagram or any of those things belong for board business. I think Zoom is wonderful. And I think technology, I'd love to see more technology. I'd like to see everybody, you know, be able to use the gate system to get in and out versus calling our, calling our resident services. So technology's wonderful, but we need to know how to, you know, use it and get more people to use it. So I, even if we made back in the boardroom, there's tons of people that can't come to our meetings. And I mean, they used to come on TV6. TV6 is good, but you know, Zoom's also really good in order for people to, to see things. So that's how I would use it, but I would limit it. I, it's not a free for all. If you don't know how to use technology right, I think you can waste a lot of times. I think it could be like going down a rabbit hole.
Thank you. Liling, that question for you. Should social media be used for board business? Why or why not?
As it exists right now, I would say no. Because one, if you do not have a law degree and a law background, and even if you have one, one's knowledge is not all reaching. One will never know if you can make an incorrect statement that can have insidious, long-term horrible effects on the corporation. And as a board member, that's where your loyalty lies. I've had recent experience. I'm not very experienced in social media. And I realize that when you make a mistake and you go back and you make the corrections, people do not go back to read it. So for a board member, until society becomes better at tracking and looking at a mistake that can be made because we are all humans, I think board business should stay off social media as it stands right now. Because any mistake you make, you cannot go back and correct it and change the perception of the people who, who have read the mistake. And therefore, the ramifications that could be bad can be insidious. And one cannot go back and take back what you have said. A person's freedom of speech as an individual is different from that of a board member when talking about board business. So my opinion is if yous are a board member, anything that has to do with board business with social media as it stands, one has to stay off it.
Okay, thank you. This is going to be your last question. In your opinion, what do you think is the most critical issue for VMS board? And how would you work to resolve or improve it?
It's the communications between what the VMS is doing and that of the residents. This is my experience as the conduit for my gate and that of VMS. So I am speaking based on that. Most residents are bogged down with their own issues because we are aging and our bodies are not in tip-top shape as we were when we were flush with youth. So not many residents are aware of what is going on. So I think a communication issue is, exists. So we need our residents to be better aware that we currently have staffing issues. And that's why it takes time to address their needs. However, there are operations, I believe, that can be improved. For example, when a resident's call for a concern, they do not always get a ticket number. And therefore, they repeatedly call. And that wastes the time of the person at the other end. If their concerns can be addressed by BMS, then a ticket number should be given immediately. So the instructions given to staff can be improved. What was your question again?
The most critical issue and how you would resolve or improve it.
Yes, it's a communicate, the most critical issue is communications.
And how would you resolve or improve it?
I hope, I'm, I'm a writer. I, I've written for the Asthma and Allergy Foundation that was based at the Johns Hopkins University. So I hope to use my writing skills to write in, in the Globe, the Village Breeze, and maybe the E-Blast, of course, with approval from, from the appropriate folks to make sure I don't say anything that, that should not be revealed. But I think improved communications can improve perception. And when residents are aware of what is being done on their behalf, they are very willing to meet you halfway. It is when they are kept in the dark that discontent occurs.
Okay, thank you. Annette, in your opinion, what do you think is the most critical issue for the VMS board? And how would you work to resolve or improve it?
Okay, the most critical issue, I guess, is our CEO is leaving in February. I think that's critical. And we need to find a new one. And there would have to be, I don't know exactly what the process is within VMS board on how to do it, but I know that there is one. And being a part of that or seeing what the steps are as far as who they reach out to and interviewing and all of that. So that, to me, is the most critical issue right now is, is the management, senior management and replacing that. And looking out to see since three years ago, what has come up that is maybe new or innovative or changed and needs to be updated in order to do that in a way that can be done as smoothly as possible.
Okay. All right, that takes care of my questions. Thank you very much. And we will now go to your concluding statements.
There's one question.
What?
I'm sorry, question number one.
They both covered that in their statements. Why do you want to serve on the VMS board? I mean, that's how Liling started her statement. But I'll be glad to go back and ask that one if you'd like to reiterate. Or you may want to put that in your closing statement. Why do you want to serve on the VMS board?
Yeah, one more time.
Should I start?
Yes, please.
I, I would like to serve on the VMS board because I feel I have the skill sets to improve the situation. First of all is perception. And the other has to do with operations. I've written standard operating procedures in my field in science, research, and at a pharmaceutical company. I, I've been told I have good communication skills. I have good problem-solving skills. So I, I hope to bring those skill sets and help as much as I can to prolong the life of this uniquely large and wonderfully interesting in some way, although occasionally frustrating, from both physical and functional obsolescence. And to do that, we need to maintain the satisfaction level of residents and keep them informed when, where we can so that rumors do not go around and waste much of our time. Thank you.
Okay, do you have a further statement that you'd like to make for closing? Or is that?
Well, I'm really interested in, because our physical structure is deteriorating with time, therefore, our expense will go up. And many of our folks are on fixed income. What I'm hoping to do as a member of the VMS board is to understand better operations, what happens, and search for funding resources within the state and the national government that will help ameliorate the situation for folks on fixed income. I've been looking at it. I have grant writing skills, grant proposal writing skills. I've been funded by the NIH for over half a million and the NSF for over 200,000. So I know how to write grant proposals. I would like to explore that with VMS staff so we can address some of our physical needs, especially for an aging population, through grants. Because a lot, I pay a lot of taxes and would like to see some of that back to improve our situation. Thank you.
Okay. Annette, would you like to give your closing statement? And if you would include that, why you want to be on this, to serve on the VMS board? You did put it in your opening, but let's put it in your closing, too.
Okay, as I said, a cooperative yet disciplined approach is required in working with the boards. If given the opportunity to represent GRF on VMS board, I will strive for continuous improvement of VMS administration oversight. And basically, the problem is, is longevity. Longevity for us, for our buildings, for everything. And we need to be able to look at ways to rethink where we are and how to do it better. And basically, you know, just continue on. Part of it is just being willing to show up every day and, you know, do, do the good task at hand. I mean, organization and operations takes daily vigilance. But it also takes cooperation, inter-board cooperation, takes the diversity to do that. And it takes a lot of creativity. And, you know, there, to see what's out there and to keep on doing research, to look at what is new and what is different. And I guess that's it.
And that's it. Okay, thank you very much. I appreciate both of you with all of your frank answers. And I will turn it back to Madam President. I think you're ready to do a vote.
Yes.
Thank you. And Grant, would you pass out the ballots?
Yes, we'll now pass out the ballots for the appointment. For those attending on Zoom, if you will, please go into the chat box and send a direct message to conference organizer on who you would like to place your vote for.
And I personally want to thank Annette for being here and Liling. I want to personally thank you both.
Thank you very much for.
For holding the time. I'm so sorry, I had this on my calendar wrong.
Well, originally, it was on the 7th. And it was going to be part of our board meeting. And it would have extended our board meeting, you know, an hour to two hours. And we basically says, no, we can't do that. If we, if we would have only had one candidate, that would have been okay. But two candidates and questions and adding all of that to the board meeting, we would have been at a board meeting until 7 o'clock at night. And don't forget me, Connie and me.
Juanita, do you need this back?
Excuse me? Yes, if you don't mind. I like that for my file. Thank you. Thank you.
The GRF directors attending via Zoom, please cast your vote at this time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'll now announce the results. The results are, there are six votes for Lee Ling Isaacs, three votes for Annette Sable-Soul, and one vote was withheld.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
And thank you. And thank you, gentlemen.
You're welcome. Thank you for helping us. We have truly appreciated you.
Okay, I'm sorry. You know that you will be seated on the 15th. You know that you will be seated on the 15th and at the annual meeting, a VMS meeting.
Okay.
And we'll be sure and give you an invitation. I'll make sure Wayming does that. Rosemary, but I want to thank you very, very much.
Thank you very much for, everyone for listening to what we have to say. I look forward to your edifying me.
And thank you for the opportunity, much appreciated.
Yes.
Okay, that will adjourn our meeting. And the GRF Board needs to go upstairs to the, did you want to say something?
We have a little paramedic situation in the lobby. So if you're going to go upstairs, could you go this way and up the elevator?
Okay.
I think it's okay, but there's quite a crew out there.
Okay, thank you. Okay, we have another meeting upstairs in the willow room. Thank you.
And Director Garthoffner, there will be a separate closed link. I will make sure to send that to you.